Bermal?
Here.
Sidig?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Wayson?
Here.
Harrington.
First order of business is a closed session, and this is a proposed closed session according to Iowa Code Section 21.51(c) to discussion strategy with council on matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure may be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation. And Grant, is it acceptable for us to go into closed session?
Yes, it is.
All right. We need a motion and a second to move us in that direction.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Stacy, can I have a roll call, please?
Harrington? Sorry, Wayson?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Sidig?
Hi.
And Bermal?
Hi.
All right. We're going to move into a closed session. Shouldn't be too long. Be right back. So you guys can bring stuff, leave stuff whenever you want to. Okay, we'll come back into open session and get to item number four, which is the approval of the agenda. I don't believe we have any changes to it. Could I have a motion for this, please?
So moved.
Seconded.
One favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item five then is the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that you want to pull out, talk about separately? Okay, could I have a motion for this as well, please?
I'll move now, Mayor.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded, and one last roll call, please. Or I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Item six is a public comment. This is time reserved for members of the public to bring forth business to the city that's not already on the agenda. If anybody has anything for the city council that's not already here, going once, going twice. All right. Item seven then is our city engineer report. Kevin?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Updates on Rancho Way Phase Five. So they're continuing work along the project, including the paving at the corners, installation of the retaining walls near the tunnel, placing the brick pavers in the medians, installing electrical conduits in the grading for the upcoming trail and sidewalk paving. New work starting this week includes pavement replacement at the southwest corner of the Zeller intersection and placing of the amended soils in the medians. I actually met with Guy and Josiah just before this meeting. We were down, we, they had the mockups for the colors, and I think we selected the two colors, I hope. I think we, I think we left in agreement. It looks really cool down there, too. I think it's going to be really neat showpiece for the city when it's all done. It's almost like a mini park. Centennial Park Loop Road, the final site grading and the seeding was completed last week, and the only thing they have left are painting of the stalls in the parking, in the, in the parking areas, and some ADA parking signs to install, and placement of amended soils and plants. And the substantial completion date on that one is May 6th, so it's a week from Friday. Contractor's aware of that, so he's working to get that completed. Dubuque Street Phase One, they, they continue work on Phases One through Three on North Dubuque Street. We had a meeting yesterday, talked to the contractor. I think he's going to expect, he's planning on paving in the relatively short term, next couple of weeks, and he's going to extend it a little bit further. I know Russ talked to Reds to make sure they were in agreement, and they are, because it's going to expedite things in front of them. So things are moving. Jones Boulevard, that's on the agenda tonight for a word of contract. Same thing with the community center roof. And then the last thing I have is the community center facility plan, and we have a staff review of that plan scheduled for Thursday morning. That's all I have, unless you have questions.
Any questions for Kevin? Kevin, the only question I have is, do you have any idea on when Rancho Way will be completed? Been a long time since I've been asked about that.
Yeah. I, I would guess sometime in June.
Okay.
I'm hoping.
Thank you. Anybody else? Good? I think I jumped on you, sorry. Item eight is our city administrator report. Brian?
Okay, thanks. You might remember in July of 2021 at a joint entities meeting, the county brought up a, a topic regarding the Solerian aquifers and a study that they did in early 2000s. They talked to the group about, shouldn't say dusting that off, but redoing that study or updating that study. The Board of Supervisors is having a meeting tomorrow, and Greg and I, Greg Metternich and I, will be attending that to understand what they're thinking about. We obviously think it's a, an important study to do. We have a number of Solerians in town, and we're most likely going to need to rely on them more down the road as the DNR puts limitations on the Jordan Aquifer, which is the real deep aquifer. So more to, to come, more to report after that meeting, I suspect, but wanted to let you know that process has, has started. And then the only thing, the only other thing I wanted to mention tonight is that the May 10th meeting, so our next meeting, Icade will be present to provide their annual update and talk a little bit about their synchronous data. This is the This is the data they collect from area businesses about growth and job growth and production growth, et cetera. So, they will be here in two weeks. That's what I have this evening.
Thank you, Ryan. Mayor's report tonight, I've got a couple of proclamations to read. And I'm getting caught up here, sorry about that. First one is our Arbor Day proclamation. And it reads, whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of businesses, business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas the City of North Liberty has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting practices. And whereas each year Arbor Day is observed by the people of North Liberty with special attention paid to the care and planting of trees. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of North Liberty do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2022 to be Arbor Day in North Liberty and encourage all North Liberty citizens to participate in tree planting and nurture, protect, and wisely use Iowa's natural wonder of trees so that we will ensure a more beautiful city and state, promoting the well-being of this and future generations. I don't think we have anybody here to receive this proclamation, but...
Mayor, I would just say Guy Goldsmith and Parks, you know, has been an integral part of that. I remember working a summer for Parks when Mayor Psalm asked that we plant 100 trees that, that season. And many of those went into Centennial Park and there was a lot of hard work by the Parks Department to do that. And so it's good to see that we keep that up and appreciate that.
Thanks, and good segue. I had a letter from the Arbor Day Foundation in the mailbox at City Hall congratulating us for 2021. And we actually found out today or this week that we were awarded the Tree City designation in 2022, which will make it 26 years in a row as such, so big thank you. Twenty-seven, excuse me, to Guy and the Parks Department. All right. Next is our proclamation for Bike Month and Bike to Work Week. Whereas the bicycle is an economic, economical, environmentally sound and effective means of transportation, recreation, and fitness. And whereas the bicycle is considered a legitimate vehicle in all 50 states and is entitled to legal and responsible use of all public roads in Iowa except interstate highways. And whereas increased use of the bicycle will benefit all citizens by improving air quality, reducing traffic congestion and noise, decreasing use of and dependence upon finite energy sources and will foster healthy lifestyles. And whereas the City of North Liberty has an ongoing commitment to encourage bicycling as a viable mode of transportation and recreation. And whereas the League of American Bicyclists has established the month of May as National Bicycle Month. Now therefore, we, the City of North Liberty, do hereby proclaim May as Bike Month and the week of May 16th to the 22nd as Bike to Work Week in North Liberty and encourage all residents to ride their bicycles to work, to the store, to the park, to school, and with friends and family to promote the many benefits achieved from bicycling. And we have someone here to accept this and some guests as well. Let me come around to you, Brian.
Well, thank you. My name is Brian Bransmayr. I'm a teacher at West High School. And I'm also a bike ambassador for the Bike Iowa City group. And these are my kids, Axel and Lumen. And if it's okay with you, we'd just like to share a couple of words. First of all, I'd like to thank you for this proclamation for our community and thanks for supporting cycling in our community. I've lived in North Liberty for 10 years and I've seen a lot of development over the years, especially with biking accessibility. For example, the Northridge Trail obviously goes to the rec center, Northridge Park, and most importantly for me, goes all the way to West High eventually. The Iowa River Corridor Trail goes to Sugar Bottom Recreation Area. And I guess if you're really adventurous, goes all the way to Solon, or goes all the way to Waterloo. And the Dubuque Street Trail goes to Haynes Ice Cream, Ace Hardware, Liberty High, and then Iowa City. And the new street and sidewalks along Centennial Park, which are great, now connects the West Lakes neighborhood safely to the rest of North Liberty, which I really appreciate. And these, I think, are all really significant run, wins for walkers, runners, and cyclists. So, anything that can be done to support biking in our community, I think is really important and appreciated. Just wanted to share a couple more words.
Biking is a fun way for people of all ages to get low-impact exercise. Biking has many health benefits, including heart health, joint mobility, strong bones, and muscle strength. Biking improves mental health by increasing endorphins and reducing anxiety, stress, and depression.
Biking reduces vehicle traffic and pollution. Biking helps riders to spend their time and money at local businesses that are easy to bike through, bike to. Biking provides opportunities to connect with other cyclists in town through group rides, races, and events. One example is our team, the Corridor Devo's.
Can you say that one more time for us? What is, what is it that's on your shirt? Corridor Devo's, okay. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for coming.
Thanks, guys. That was great.
And I had a number of things on the calendar here recently that I wanted to recap and to bring to your attention. First of all, last week I had the opportunity, kind of in the work that I do, to attend the first-ever University of Iowa Decarbonization Summit. And it sounded like maybe it would be a good effort, but it was really important and impactful information that was shared by some pretty impressive people around the world that were part of that. So, I pulled a lot of information out of that and I will be bombarding you with that in the months to come as, as we proceed. We had a joint entities meeting last Monday already. Eric attended as well as Riquisha, and mostly what we, we heard and discussed was COVID, the update from Johnson County on that. And then we also heard from, and it was hosted at the Iowa City School District on their plans for expansion in, in the corridor. This Thursday night, you all would have received an invitation to the Iowa debut of the documentary A Decent Home. That'll be at Film Scene. If you are able to make it, all of our support and visibility at that event will be really helpful and supportive of those in our community. And to thank in advance Candy Evans for leading this, and she'll be the star of the show. Hope they have a red carpet for her. In your packet tonight, at the very end, from Chief Plots, you would have seen an invitation from him for a really special ceremony that'll be happening on Sunday morning at the Fire Department. If you're able to be there, Mr. Wason will have some outstanding remarks to make on our behalf, representing the city. That's at 10:30, if you can be a part of that. And then thanks, and, and that's a pretty significant achievement. In a couple of weeks, you would have received an invitation also to be a guest at the Guide Link Center, not as a patient, but as someone there again in the community. For those of you that have not been to the Guide Link Center and can carve out that two to four Wednesday, May 18th, I would encourage you to, to make any effort to do so. I was down there just a couple of weeks ago and, and met with Abby, got an updated tour. I've been in there probably three times. Her level of excitement on what that facility is able to provide to our county is contagious. And she's got a lot of great stories and visioning for what we can do with that center here in the community. Next Friday, May 6th, is the, the Iowa City Chamber's first Friday Coffee. Happens every first Friday of the month. This month it'll be out at GEICO, so if you can attend, that starts at 7:30. It's generally just an hour or so before your day starts. Join them out there for that. So, that's my exhaustive list of the calendar. What updates and news do any of you have to share?
Sunday, I helped volunteer at the Crandic Run at one of the first stops on the half marathon. And boy, there were some people who were really flying through there. So, there were some people who were taking that very seriously and stuff. So, it all went pretty well. Didn't seem to be any major incidents and stuff. The Streets Department was out pretty early and the PD head of a whole bunch of folks in extra to help with traffic control and to make sure everything was going pretty smoothly. And then they had some extra volunteers, so we appreciate all them helping out as well.
Thank you for doing that. And so, you had one or two things?
I did. I attended a fundraiser golf outing for the Skelly family on Friday. Very good turnout from this entire area to support that family locally. Also attended with Councilor Sittig the time I was there, the planning open house. So, I want to thank Ryan Rusnick for the work that him and his team put in there. It's really neat to see the ideas and again, it's, it's addictive when you go online and you start reading through all the bubbles in the comments and you zoom into different areas of town and to see all of the ideas that folks have for this beautiful community. Keep it coming. Please go to our website and look that up and, and make your comments for the future of North Liberty. And then I did stop in and talk to the manager of Reds briefly, just to make sure things were good. Didn't want to interrupt you, Mayor, but I saw you there with your beautiful family eating that evening, so. And I'll make a plan to stop in and talk to J and A as well and just make sure things are good. I know Reds was very appreciative of the, the rock that was poured to assist in that, that driveway assist. So, appreciate staff working through that. Signage looks to be good, from what I have seen, and haven't heard any complaints, so appreciate that a lot.
Thank you.
I, yeah, as Brett mentioned, I attended the comp plan meeting on whichever night that was. I can't remember now. And it is interesting, and I was, I was glad to see, actually, some of my, my daughter's high school friends were there giving their input, so I'm glad to see another generation coming in and being involved. I did attend the joint entities meeting as well and, and while the COVID information was a little discouraging, it was not, it's not doom and gloom as far as we know right now. The school district saw a large increase from one week to last week, from the week before to the last week, but I, they were not raising the alarm bells yet, so the county wasn't. And I, I had the honor, honor and opportunity to attend a dinner on Friday night with a number of community leaders and the, the head consul from the Mexican consulate in Omaha. I was very honored to be there on behalf of the city. It was really interesting. She was there for, in Iowa for the first time visiting. I think she said, they said she had scheduled 200 meetings with immigrants in, in the area for that day. So, she'd been very busy. She was very gracious to be there. I was there with Mayor Teague and Mayor Foster, Sheriff Kunkel, and some other community members. I will report that of the non-elected officials there, I think I counted maybe eight or 10. Four of them are from North Liberty, so it was, it was really interesting to, to sit down and talk with them. Unfortunately, I was at the wrong end of the table to, to have a good conversation with, with the consul, but I did have some, some good conversations with other folks, so it was, it was nice.
Appreciate you doing that for us, Eric.
And thanks for, for asking me.
I attended last Friday's meeting for Johnson County's Affordable Housing. Eric was on that virtual meeting as well, and it was my first meeting with the particular organization. And I was dumbfounded by some of the stats that were shared and the dire need for the discussion and resources and of course awareness around the topic of affordable housing. So, I'm further more charged and excited for more awareness to come with this Thursday's film, especially bringing to light our own community. And then to piggyback that, I, it was shared, that event, Thursday's event was shared at yesterday's Correville Connections, which welcomed people from Iowa City, North Liberty, obviously, and the City of Correville. And one of the things that was really interesting was there's a lot of entrepreneurs looking at North Liberty for commercial spaces to grow their business into here. And I'm very encouraged by the, just the future of what's to come for North Liberty. A lot of people are using 2022 as the year to, to launch new endeavor. So, I think that it's gonna be an exciting time to see what's to come.
Thank you all.
Could I just add also about the, the movie on, on Thursday? Last I had heard, the city had some, some tickets that were available, first come, first served at no cost. So, if people are interested and they don't have tickets yet for Thursday night, they're, I can, the communications department has those tickets.
Yeah, thanks for that reminder. Yeah, just reach out to the, to the city for those. Great. Thank you all for the time that you put in outside of these meetings to represent us in the community. Okay, let's move on to item number 11, which is the Highway 965 Phase Two Project. And item A is the Resolution Number 2022-38, a resolution regarding the settlement of legal claim. Can I have a motion for this, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Does anyone have any further comments? Seeing none. Stacy?
Smith?
Roll call, please. It's okay.
Smith?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
It's been moved. Thank you all. Item 12 is the Jones Boulevard Extension Project, and this is Resolution Number 2022-39, a resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the execution of the contract for the Jones Boulevard Improvements Project, North Liberty, Iowa. Can I have a motion for this, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we need to say anything more? We had information in our council packet. Do you guys have any questions?
I'm just glad to see that we aren't way above our estimate. It's nice.
Yeah, we're very happy with the results. The contractor who got it is the contractor who's working out there now and all that grading work that you see. That was the main difference in theirs, and the second little bit is their earthwork price was a lot lower.
Perfect. Stacy, could I have a roll call for this one, please?
Sittig?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you all. Item 13 is the Community Center Roof Replacement, and this is Resolution Number 2022-40, a resolution accepting the bid and authorizing execution of the contract for the Jones Boulevard Improvements Project, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for this one, please?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Kevin, could you give us a quick recap on this one?
Yeah, so this one, we had a very large turnout. We had nine bids received on this project. And the, the estimate was over 900,000, and you can see in your packet that the low bidder was 538,000, so it's quite a bit below, although the range varied from 538,000 all the way to 866,000 with those nine bidders. I think that kind of tells the volatility of the roofing industry right now and the building, some of the building projects as well, much different than a roadway project. We do recommend award, there was one to T and K Roofing. There was one irregularity with their bid. They didn't acknowledge receipt of addendum number two. But after discussion with, and with the city attorney, his opinion is that it is not a material irregularity, no, no effect of the, of the bid price. It, it really didn't. All it did was change a meeting date in the future. So, yeah, we recommend award to T and K Roofing.
Any questions for Kevin?
I just wanted to...
I'd like to add to that, too, that it is a contractor that we're, we know of and they've worked for Shelley and Guy at the community center. So, and they were pretty excited that they were the low bidder. Do we feel pretty good about it even though there, there was so far under the estimate that? Yes.
I, I was just noticing, and I didn't notice this before, but there's an error in the agenda. So, I just want to point out that, that this is a resolution for the community center roof replacement, not for Jones Boulevard.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
And that's what my second to the motion was. I assume that's what the motion was.
To the Community Center Roof or to Jones Boulevard?
To Community Center Roof.
Thank you.
Where are you seeing that error at?
In the agenda I have, it's in 13A.
Says the Jones Boulevard. Improvements Project.
Okay, I'm not seeing that online. That's one I don't have.
Yeah, we did correct that on Friday. So there may be a version out there that's not corrected. So.
I apologize for that, for not having read that current one. Let me dip into my packet here. I was going off of the paper version of the agenda here. Yeah, I've got it right here. Yep, thank you. Grant, do I need to back up? Do we need to do anything differently on this? The resolution number is the same.
I think we've had enough discussion to clarify what it is we're talking about here. So no, I think you're, I think you're.
Okay, okay. Eric, thank you for pointing that out. Sometimes I read things like a robot. I didn't even read it out loud correctly. You guys have any other questions? Okay. Stacy, could I have another roll call, please?
Bermal?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. This is item 14, then. This is Liberty Center Easement, and item A is the Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Vacation of Easement. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this? Seeing no one rushing to the podium. We'll close the public hearing. Item B then is resolution number 2022 dash 41, and this is a resolution vacating an easement being a part of the final plat of Liberty Center Part One, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for the vacation?
So moved.
Second.
If I can interject here, the language is not quite right. It's not, we're not vacating an easement. We're transferring it back to the owner. There's a legal distinction on that, but it's for nerds to worry about. The idea is that we have an easement we don't need. We're giving it back to the property owner. The easement then goes away. If we were actually vacating an easement, that would be something else that would require a different process. But this way is the clearest way we can do this. And so that's, that's how we're doing it. We are receiving then in your next item here, a different easement for, for stormwater. So that's why we're giving one up here. It's, it's in exchange for one that doesn't run right through someone's building.
Thank you for that clarification. Kind of running two for two here now for resolution language, but it's the best we could do. All right. Could I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Stacy, can I have a roll call, please?
Bermal?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Item B, resolution 2022-41 carries. Resolution number 2022-42 then is a resolution approving the Drainage and Storm Sewer Easement Agreement between NLCD Lot 12, LC and the City of North Liberty. Can I have a motion for this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Grant, anything else to add to this?
No, sir.
Okay. Any other questions, you guys?
Was there anything installed in the old easement? And if so, are, I assume they're paying to move it?
It's already done.
Okay.
Near, near as I can tell.
I actually have a diagram up on the screen. There was a drainage easement that went in the middle of those two lots.
Right, I know where it is. I didn't know if there was, there was actually infrastructure in there.
All taken care of and city engineer verified that it's within the easement and ready to accept.
This is, this is pretty close to asking for forgiveness rather than permission. But it was overseen by everybody. So we're just clearing this up after the fact.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Stacy, roll call, please.
Sittig?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 15 then is our Stormwater GIS Project, and this is resolution number 2022-43, a resolution approving the Professional Services Agreement between SAM LLC and the City of North Liberty for Stormwater GPS Mapping and GIS Development. Could I just get a motion for this to start, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Does anyone want to give us a quick update on this?
This is a continuation of a project we started a couple of years ago. We have our, all of our water and wastewater infrastructure in the GIS system now. The most expensive and time-consuming piece will be the stormwater piece. And so we're ready to move forward with that. We talked about that during the budget process. And if council approves this agreement, we'll get started right away. I will note that, you know, the, the big expense here, and you, I think you heard Greg and Michael talk about this, is the initial input of these structures. As developments occur, we're then able to keep up on those and include those. We have a little device where we can continue to update our GIS with real-time data.
So is it going to take staff time to go out and GIS locate, or they're doing it?
This, in this particular case, they're doing existing infrastructure. Then as new developments come on, that's when we're going, that's when we're doing it. And then the one outlier there is service lines. They're private. So the, the company did not locate those. But when we have time available, Greg's sending a guy out to locate service lines and curb stops. That'll be very beneficial in the future.
And the city was on our street a couple of weeks ago, maybe a couple, about a month ago or so, and they just couldn't be happier with how easy that is to use and how precise it is and how helpful it will be in the future.
Faster response to emergencies, too.
Yeah. Okay, are there any other questions?
I was just going to point out that this is something that we discussed during budgeting that would be paid for by ARPA funds.
That is correct, yes.
Thanks for that clarification. Stacy, could I have a roll call, please?
Sittig?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 16 is the Preserve Part 2A. And this is resolution number 2022-44, a resolution approving the amended and restated developers agreement for the Preserve Part 2A, North Liberty. Can I start off with a motion for this one, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Anybody got this one?
So this is just the, the two family lots. It's just west of the recent rezonings we did. So it's kind of within that existing preserve area. So there's 11 lots. So these are two families. So a total of 22 units. The reason they're doing the restated developers agreement is they didn't quite finish exactly the paving per the construction plan. So they just shortened the plat. So it was necessary to restate and amend the developers agreement as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Russ? Stacy, you have a roll call on this, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Excuse me. Motion carries. Item B then is resolution number 2022-45, a resolution approving the final plat and accepting improvements for the Preserve Part 2A, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for this one, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Russ, anything to add on this one? Any questions for us? Stacy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 17 is the Liberty Villas Rezoning, and item A is the Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Rezoning Amendment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to make any public comment in regards to this agenda item, now is the time. Seeing none. Russ, item B is Staff and Commission Recommendations.
Okay, so what's this, a comprehensive plan amendment as well as a rezoning? Right now, comprehensive plan is consistent with the zonings. Zoning is C2A, commercial and the industrial part. So the comprehensive plan is, is industrial and commercial, those areas. Total rezoning is 25.64 acres. RS6, single family, would be 19.73. And then there's two areas of RM12 PAD, and that's on 5.91 acres. And I'll explain the, the purpose of the PAD in a second. I kind of started looking into the comprehensive plan and zoning, well, I should say zoning in, in the 1990s. You know, in the 1990s, this was the north end of town and Centro was, the development came in. And, and I think the vision for the city was everything at north end, above the residential would be kind of our industrial area of the city. And then residential development grew around it. And so you kind of had this, this area. And actually, as you went west, west of Rancho, north of Penn, that was also zone industrial, hence the Maytag Building. We still have some legacy industrial zoning in there. So we're obviously going to be taking a closer look at what that is. And should that be designated something different? I have a feeling it is because contemporary industrial uses are, are located towards the interstate most likely. And when we get requests for industrial development, that's where they want to be located. And here's an aerial back then, just kind of shows you really just farms at the north end of town. I always find this pretty interesting. Here is the, the development, and this is just a concept plan, but the areas I've circled in red are the RM12. We think they're both good locations. One's on the front edge of Dubuque Street and the other's adjacent to Centro. The reason for the PAD is, is we don't allow by code, and this was in the recent code amendment, town home development to have direct access on public streets. It's, 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 it's been our practice previous to adopting a code amendment that, that you have private streets and then you have townhomes on either side, and then that private street comes out on the public street. There's, there's very few exceptions in the city where they actually front on a public street. Since this is a self-contained subdivision, staff was in agreement that this, this wouldn't be an impact. It's not like you have a bunch of different curb cuts on townhomes fronting on Dubuque Street, per se. It's, it's internal to the subdivision. And so we, we didn't find that to be any issue whatsoever. We did have two neighborhood meetings, good neighborhood meetings. First one was held via Zoom. It was, it was very well attended, mostly from Fox Run neighbors. Mayor was in attendance. There was some confusion at the meeting. You know, I would say with situations like this, kind of fitting that last piece of the puzzle is, is often a challenge. And, and I'd probably say if you're a homeowner living in Fox Run along that property line, it's kind of a shock that, that something's going to be developed there. So there were a lot of questions, I thought, that were very detailed, that, that couldn't quite be answered at this point in time. But they did give us some ideas that we need to look into this as we get further on with development. Namely, this first phase of Fox Run wasn't developed with the detention pond. So the property's drained to the south. And so this development is going to have to accept that stormwater and, and deal with it. And so that's going to be an important factor. But again, there was a lot of, a lot of detailed questions. Again, we had, we had another neighbor, first one was in February, second neighborhood meeting was in March. We did kind of a hybrid was in person and online. The numbers dropped drastically, I thought. But we didn't hear any new comments. And then in anticipation of this meeting, I did, I did have a, a list of neighbors that attended the meeting and reached out to them, just informing them that we were going to have this meeting tonight. And they're more than welcome to voice their opinions and, and attend the meeting. So I think we've done a pretty good job of public outreach on this one. I'm committed to maintaining contact with, you know, th- those neighbors about the development as we, as we move forward and those construction plans. We do, and we will have a eight-foot trail along Dubuque Street, and that'll be able to connect up to Rancho Way, south to, to Dubuque Street. We are looking, talking with the developer about installing an eight-foot wide path along the north property line to connect up with the Cedar Springs Trail. Kind of talking with our consultants, that would be a, a pretty good trail connection. Again, we've got to deal with that stormwater. I think that's a pretty important issue. But by and large, staff does believe that residential development is a better fit here. It's certainly more compatible with the residential development to the north. You've had Christine Grant being developed, Cedar Springs, Fox Run. So character of the area has pretty much changed drastically. We always welcome Centro as, as a partner or community. But, you know, things have changed around it, and that's okay. So Planning Commission did consider this item and unanimously recommended approval of both the Comprehensive Plan Amendment to Residential as well as the RS6 and RM12 zoning. And the applicant is here in the audience, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Russ before we get to the applicant? Actually, I'm sorry. I know that you were on that first Zoom meeting as well. And I think I overstay the obvious, but I think what we saw in the second meeting and what's in front of us now is, is a lot more clarity than we saw in that first meeting. So Russ, I, Russ, I appreciate you taking that time to, to put that second meeting together for everyone. And I believe that's probably why we don't see a lot of comments now on that. So Eric, I'm sorry to jump on you there.
No, that's fine. And I apologize if I missed it, but have we heard anything from Centro about this?
No, I received a call from them, just kind of curious of what was going on with the development, but, but no strong objections or concerns about, about residence development over there.
Do you know how far like some of those backyards will be from that railroad spur?
Well, so there's an easement on the east side. So when you actually have the homes, there's a pretty substantial, I guess it's a, I can't remember if it's a force maimer or a gas easement. But the setback is, it's at, I think it's more than 50 feet, but it's, the easement's pretty wide through there. So you're going to have a pretty decent setback. What they've talked about is making that kind of an area of landscaping to kind of buffer that area.
Mayor, I wouldn't mind hearing from the applicant, just his business, more about him, where he's from, that, that type of thing.
And what? That's next on the agenda. Let's finish this up here first. Any other questions for, for Russ? Okay. Item C then is the applicant's presentation.
My name is Brad Cummins. I'm actually from here in North Liberty, and I'm working with Dan Bernacki on developing this ground. As Ryan said, we think it'll be a good fit for the community, given the proximity to the school and the existing neighborhoods to change it from industrial to residential. So happy to answer any questions you have.
Fire away. Brad came all this way and sat through our worth of meeting.
So what challenges are you seeing here besides the stormwater issue?
That's the main one, is, is the stormwater and carrying that through. But we're working with Townsend Engineering and the city to make sure that's handled properly.
What kind of differentiation are we going to have in these units to vary the, the look since the, the build design looks similar besides color of siding?
So that is just for the threeplex units. The rest of the lots are all going to be single-family homes, varying styles, sizes throughout the, all the single-family lots. And then the, the threeplex units, we will split those up, different styles of stone, different siding colors to break that up.
I think one thing they mentioned was a, a one-story product. Is that correct?
The threeplexes, we'd really like to stick with a ranch style, a zero entry for accessibility. We see that there's a lot of two-story units in the market already, but not a lot of ranch style, zero entry with accessibility.
And then price point ranges?
The homes we're looking will probably be in the four range, and then the condos in the 300s. Obviously, that'll all depend on how pricing comes back at the time of building.
How many single-family?
61. As it sits right now. And we have some easements and we have some stormwater run, run across areas that will impact those lots on the north side.
Yeah, much of the design, I would say, is, you know, the, the fire department, when you have certain 30 units or more, you need two public accesses. So needed both of those off Dubuque Street, and we wanted to get those accesses as far away, as far apart as we could without getting too far into that curve. And so that kind of started with those accesses, and then kind of the rest of the design starts to lay out.
Yeah, that's actually pretty cool, so.
Russ, any, any issue on snow movement there?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
No. We do have that cul-de-sac there. We, obviously, we don't, we're not big fans of cul-de-sacs. We'll, we'll do them in hardships. We would consider this case to be one. We, we can't have that road punch through and connect to Dubuque Street. So this would be a circumstance where we probably have to truck that out in the cul-de-sac, but the rest we can just push.
Which will be on the back of who, the HOA?
This will all be public streets through here.
Okay. Because I live in a cul-de-sac and the city doesn't truck it out.
Okay, I'll have to, we'll, we'll have to double check with Michael about that.
Yeah, it, I mean, our, our streets crews do a wonderful job. Don't get me wrong. But in, in heavy snow events, in arrangements like this, hydrants get covered. And there's only, you know, it can only go one way. And bigger, bigger piles with, with multiple snow events, they don't have a choice. Okay? But that's, that, I see that as a challenge in this arrangement. So I just bring it up for, for thoughts.
Point taken.
So then, I guess, final question, and this is more for maybe the applicant. So, or Russ, in that cul-de-sac, is there an overflow swell that is required there because of the drainage issue coming from the north?
Well, diverted cabin.
Yeah, there will be. There'll be probably two drainage easements from the north to that street that runs east-west.
Okay, so it'll be along the street, though. It won't be in the cul-de-sac. There'll be two, two points?
I don't know how it drains at, at the cul-de-sac, but, but the. I don't know how it drains at the cul-de-sac, but the runoff from the north at Fox Run will have to go through two of those lots.
Okay.
The only point I'd like to make is that the city of North Liberty, we have a shortage of zero-entry condominiums with regards to not having any stairs. We've got a few on Jaro Way, and then, of course, we have some on Tartan, so this fulfills the need for a lot of folks that are looking for this type of product in the area.
Brad, thank you.
Thank you.
For your time tonight.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Brad.
So Item D then is Resolution Number 2022-46, and this is a resolution approving the amendment of the Comprehensive Plan Use Map. So could I get a motion to start this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions about just making this change? Seeing none. Stacy, could I roll call, please?
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Motion carries. And then Item E is First Consideration of Ordinance Number 2022-10, an ordinance amending Chapter 167 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances by amending the use on regulations on property located in North Liberty to those set forth in the municipal code for the RS six, single-unit residence district, and RM twelve, PAD, multi-unit residence district planned area development. Have a motion for this, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any other questions on this side, this agenda item? Stacy, can I roll call, please?
Bermal?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Thank you all. Motion carries.
Can I make a quick comment? The only thing I just wanted to point out, that this is maybe a silly comment, but having that bike path and that connection to Cedar Springs would be a huge benefit to the area.
Item 18 is Reprecincting Ordinance, and Item A is the Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Amended Precincts. Anyone in the audience to address the counsel on this item? As Brad sneaks out. Seeing none. Item B then is the Proposed Suspension of Requirement for Consideration of Ordinance Amendment at Two Council Meetings Before Final Passage. And Grant, can you tell us what we're doing here tonight?
Yeah.
Sit back.
Yeah, just sit right back, and you'll hear a tale.
Exactly.
I'll try to give you the Reader's Digest version. We worked with Johnson County, as did Solon, Coralville, Iowa City, to come up with voting precincts following the decennial census. And we scrambled, you might remember, last year to get these adopted within a certain timeframe, so that they could be adopted in accordance with state law. Turns out that the Secretary of State's Office has a disagreement with Johnson County about how some of these lines are drawn. There's a particular definition that I won't bore you with, but the deal is that the Secretary of State has final say on voting precincts and precinct plans. And so the Secretary of State's Office has tried to work with Johnson County. We got pushback from Janet Linus and myself and a bunch of other folks, but we all understand that there's really no disagreement with them. There's no process for changing their mind, and they have other statutes that they have to comply with, having to do with the location of census voting blocks. And so the Secretary of State has imposed a voting precinct plan upon the city of North Liberty. This is already done, okay? They did the same thing with Coralville as well, and with Johnson County. They also had imposed mandatory requirements between Solon, Coralville, Iowa City, and North Liberty, those four entities with the county pursuant to their powers. The reason we have this motion to suspend our rules is that we are required by Chapter 47.3 of state law is to enact their imposed plan as quickly as possible. And the Secretary of State's Office has intimated to us that that means suspending multiple meetings and to implement them right away. I get that it's a little strange, considering the plan is already implemented. These are our precincts, whether this council chooses to act or not, but enacting in good faith and partnership with Secretary of State and Johnson County recommend that we would waive the ordinary statutory requirement of two meetings prior to final action on an ordinance. That motion, by the way, requires three-quarters of our council, so that would mean that all four of you would have to vote in the affirmative in order for that motion to pass. After that, the next item on the agenda would be the reading of the ordinance. That would then only require three of you to pass. Based on how things are, this is sort of an odd bird, right? That we, your options are or chicken, right? There's no other, there's no choice here for us. And so I am compelled to recommend approval to all of you, and happy to answer any questions you might have. But the first order of business would then be to waive the ordinary requirement of two readings before the meeting of final pass, of final action on the ordinance amendment.
Thank you, Grant. And as a reminder, that was the Reader's Digest version?
Right, I'm sorry.
Ordinarily, we don't like to suspend those rules and give the public comment time, an opportunity to play out, but we can't affect the outcome of it. So could I have a motion on Item B then to propose the suspension of this requirement?
So moved.
Moved and?
Second.
Second. Okay, Brian.
Does it help the county?
It helps the county, yes.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
That's a great question.
Yep, it helps the county.
So we're helping the county. Okay.
No, yeah, and so the, no one in the county, everyone's going to be able to vote, right where they're supposed to be able to vote. Some people who are county voters, who are county electors, will be voting in North Liberty precincts, but the county will be providing them with special ballots for them that are set aside. So that's the biggest change from what we would have had. We have some thin areas of North Liberty that are connected, or that are not in, that are in the county, that are connected to the county by a 50-foot strip, and those were overlooked by the census folks. And so they blocked them all as though they were surrounded by North Liberty, even though they're not. So that's the Chipmunks subdivision, the Sealments, for instance. So those folks were blocked in by the Census Bureau, and this is the way to get them voting in the county, and the electors they're supposed to be, and to account for the other recent annexations. It's maybe inelegant, but it's, as I said, it's done.
So it doesn't matter, this vote doesn't matter?
Uh, I mean, I don't want to split hairs with you, no. I mean, no, sure.
My personal point is, I don't like it when the state crams things down the throat of local decision-makers.
No, Counselor, I agree with you.
I would be more apt to vote no, to prove a point, when it doesn't really matter, is my point.
I think that that's a sympathetic viewpoint. I would still recommend, staff still recommends approval.
I understand that, and I understand that professional stance and opinion. My question for those that I represent, is there anything in there that was done that precludes, makes harder to vote, changes lines, that does any harm to the voters of North Liberty?
No, and in fact, I think a lot of the good that came out of our reprecincting discussion is preserved in this. This, I'll leave it there.
Okay.
And then it may make some of the people who live in the county just easier for them to vote.
Sure.
They can just go into North Liberty and so.
Yep, the auditor's office is responsible for determining those precincts, and so they might, the auditor's office might have a little bit of a harder time figuring out who votes where, what their ballots are supposed to look like. It doesn't fall on us to do that, but the deputy auditor and the auditor have been, they were gracious about this and willing to work with the state to make sure that we, that everybody can make sure that everybody can vote. So that's as much as I can polish it.
I understand.
I mean, did our lines that we approved move?
Some of them, yes. Not substantially. We blocked off some portions of, for example, there's an area northwest, in the northwest part of the city that is on the other side of 380. That's technically going to be voting in the county right now, but no one in North Liberty lives there, and so that's okay. That's required because it's technically in a different state legislative district. That one is not as objectionable as some of the other ones might be. But, so because there's a law that says you can't draw this unless it would force the creation of a district with less than 50 voters, and that was, that definition is the source of the disagreement between the county and the state, whether it's forcing the creation of a district or not. And so there was a difference in interpretation, and so different lines got drawn based on that. And that's, I hope that's responsive.
And I'll just say, just, I don't think that Johnson County UCD can this, because I've got a city that's kind of had a similar issue. And, I mean, requirements are all there in the state code, right?
Yes.
And so it's just an issue that came up with some of the census blocks, I think, that maybe hopefully will be addressed for the next census, do we know?
No, it's 10 years, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to get out my crystal ball for that. Hopefully, yes.
So, well, I don't see there's a reason to, as unhappy as it makes us, I don't think there's a reason to not just get it over with and be done with it.
The alternative, folks, is that we're going to bring this back to you for two more meetings and two more readings.
Question that I have is, in terms of distributing the messaging to those folks affected, who's responsible for funding that message? How is that going to be?
County.
County, okay.
I mean, well, to the extent, we're publishing the ordinance and, but the, telling people where their precincts are, that's going to be the county auditor's office.
And to reiterate what Counselor Wason just said, we can do this over three meetings, or we can do it in one meeting. We don't really get to change the outcome on there, so. Counselor Smith, I think we're all in your camp on this one.
Understood.
We need to bite our tongue.
Appreciate that.
You're welcome. This has been moved and seconded. Does anybody have anything else for discussion purposes? If we are to continue with Items C and D, we are going to need, as Grant said, all four of your support in doing so. All right. Stacy, roll call, please.
Sittig?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Thank you all. Easier topics. Item C then is the Consideration and Adoption of Ordinance Number 2022-11, an ordinance amending voting precincts within Chapter 6.07 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances. Have a motion for this item, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Grant, to clarify?
Only need three of you for this one.
Three of you on this one. Okay. Stacy, roll call, please.
Bermal?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Smith?
Nay.
Wason?
Aye.
There we go.
Thank you for the out, Mayor.
It's a little better that way.
It does.
Item D is Resolution Number 2022-47, a resolution approving the Letter of Agreement Regarding Voting Precincts Assignments for Certain Portions of North Liberty Between the City of North Liberty and the Johnson County Board of Supervisors. Kind of a motion for this item, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
This is an agreement that, like one with Solon and Coralville, and this has all been imposed by the Secretary of State. This one is us agreeing with the county, and not, and so staff definitely recommends approval.
Thanks for that clarifying point. Stacy, can I roll call on this, please?
Sittig?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all for your patience and time, and Grant for condensing that down as much as you could. Item 19 is the Zoning Ordinance Amendment, and this is our second consideration of ordinance number 2022-09, an ordinance amending Section 167.01 regarding the definition of masonry required, Section 168.07279, regarding design standards for attached garages and sections 168.0776 and 168.0777, correcting scripters' errors. Could I have a motion for our second consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any new thoughts or ideas since the first time around? All right, Stacy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 20 is the Matnick Rezoning, and this is our third consideration of ordinance number 2022-08, an ordinance amending Chapter 167 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances by amending the use regulations on property located at 10 Yaro Way, located in North Liberty, to those set forth in the municipal code for the RM 21, multiple-unit residential district. Could I have a motion for our third consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions?
I just want to say thanks to Brian for getting that information about the house that it's not been moved. There's a lot, it sounds like there's a lot of interest in it. Hopefully, we'll see that, something happened there.
Appreciate you making eye contact with this Ryan, but it was that Ryan.
Oh, it was that Ryan? Okay. The response came from that Ryan.
Yeah, right.
So thank you, Ryan. And I really, really hope that the developer is not, doesn't stop pursuing that or doesn't put a stop to that after we approve this third reading, because I would not look favorably on that, so.
Do we have any guidelines in place for the destruction of the house if we have to go, if they have to go that direction, in terms of where those items are going to be disposed of, salvaged, so be it?
No, what the commitment from the property owner was, is they, you know, first, if somebody could move it, and then second, if they can salvage it. There are entities, usually in larger cities, but Cedar Rapids, Davenport, but Iowa City, that actually are pretty good at taking some of this old growth wood and reselling it in resale shop, so I think at worst that would be it, but not everything is going to be able to be saved.
I can speak.
Please do.
I don't want to suggest that there is a legal commitment from the property owner to do anything here. There is not a condition attached to this rezoning that it's conditioned upon them moving the house or salvaging things. That's their property, they can do with it what they want, but I think they have been forthcoming, as Mr. Rusnick indicated, with their willingness to do things that make sense to them for that, so just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Yeah, it's important. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Stacy.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all. Item 21 is Old Business. Covered a lot in the beginning in your reports. Anything else? Item 22 is New Business.
I wanted to just, I guess, put homework out there. Maybe Ryan can tell me. The north of town on the railroad tracks, those railroad cars have been there a really long time. I know that we have very little authoritative power over moving those. How long are those going to be there?
We don't know, and we, this is something we struggle with every year. And we've actually, when residents that call in, we give them an email address to email, because our push doesn't go very far. I do know that they are looking at, or have talked about, I should say, building more storage for cars up in Cedar Rapids. That's where all these are coming from. They get paid to store these cars, and that would help, but until then, we just, we don't have any, we just don't have any jurisdiction.
Okay. Any other new business?
Okay. I was just going to say, I was glad to see the, maybe it'd happen. I was just going to say, I was glad to see the, maybe it happened, I don't think it happened before our last meeting, but the pumps and the tanks from the old Casey's have been removed, and that's helped immensely, but do we know if there's been a demolition permit pulled from the building?
No, that's all, that's another discussion we've had with Casey's, and they are, they believe there might be some value to that building, believe it or not, although we object. We'll continue to push.
You guys tug at my heartstrings when you mention that building coming down, so I appreciate that. All right. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for your productive meeting tonight.